All right, we're gonna get started. This is a regular scheduled board meeting for Edgewood City Schools. Mrs. Bowers, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Barry Gabber.
Present.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Here.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
Present.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Here.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Here.
Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord God, we just thank you for this opportunity to come together and, and God, let us not only make the best decisions for our students, for our faculty, for our schools, God, but let us glorify you in everything discussed, every decision made. God, we just pray for direction and, and let this be a great opportunity of discussion. And God, I just thank you for every single person here who takes the time to further our schools, to further our students, who are not just the future, but they're the now, God. And let this just be a great meeting in your mighty name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Next, I'm gonna look for a motion for the approval of the agenda. Mr. Michael Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft. Mrs. Bowers, would you call it, please?
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Mr. Barry Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Hey, we have one presentation this evening. Are we ready?
We're ready.
We're gonna go ahead and pass over the Ohio Facility Construction Commission and move right into Tom York with a Butler Tech update. Tom, we appreciate you being here with us this evening.
I appreciate you letting me be here. Thank you so much. It's good to see you all. I don't have any gifts tonight, Amy, but I'm working on a notebook.
You already got any one?
Well, probably gonna run out of it. Do you write, don't you? No, it's really good to be here. And it's been really exciting to see what's going on at Butler Tech. This past week, we had, they had a groundbreaking at the new aviation building that's gonna be built at the Middletown Airport, actually across from Magellan Industries, which is an avionics company. And thirty thousand square feet, I think, is a really neat building. It has the, the theme of aircraft. It looks like a wing coming out of the ground, but it's really sharp. There was another groundbreaking the week before at the Bioscience Center, thirty-one thousand additional feet there. I'm hoping that y'all are getting the electronic student success. I printed it out. It should be coming to your email. Is there anybody not getting it? Because if you're not, I'll have them do it all over again.
Yes.
Y'all getting it?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So if you looked at that email, you, you got a good shot of the Hamilton, new Hamilton campus that's going to be there where the old Champion Papers headquarters was. Yeah, it has three hundred and some thousand square feet in it. But the neat thing, we won't be filling it up right away, but the really neat thing about it is Butler Tech wrote a grant. They've received a little over a million, almost two million dollars to buy equipment to put in there for machine work. They're also gonna use some of it for the Bioscience Center. I probably, this is not an official statement, but I know the dream that they have is have a radiology program at that Bioscience Center at some point. So we're excited. There's a lot of neat things going on. I'll keep you posted on opportunities for y'all to come visit and attend some of the things. But it's, it's an exciting place to be.
We'll pass on our gratitude and all the great things happening at Butler Tech.
I certainly will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
To y'all.
Bye.
Both of my parents worked at Veronica when, before it turned to Magellan. So those look very, very well. And we have an Edgewood grad that works at the airport, Tyler Vander. Tyler works down there.
Nice to see the ties.
So next we have public participation. We don't have anything for this evening, so we'll move on to treasure items. Mrs. Bowers, would you like to start?
Yes, Mr. Gabber. The first agenda item is the board minutes from the September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Looking for a motion to approve the board minutes from the September meeting. Mr. Michael Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, any discussion? Mrs. Bowers, do you call it, please?
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Barry Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item is approval of the financial reports as presented.
Looking for a motion to approve the financial reports as presented. So Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft. Any discussion?
I have a question. These ones for the ESC on the purchase orders over ten thousand, is that something we've already approved and we're just, or is that new?
I think we have them as to what the purchase order numbers are.
The psychology and success program.
Yes, the school psychologists, we brought a contract last month. We have someone going out on maternity leave and that is coming in to fulfill the success program was also part of the COV original agreement or is now having a need, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we already, like, we already looked at this stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question also. Six thousand dollars for ice cream? I'm just, I mean, that sounds like a lot of ice cream.
Is it part of the PBIS on the sprays? Is that part of, I don't know.
Is this replacing something that happened at the month of freezing?
I'll tell you why, why this, no, it's not. This is out here because we have a pot of COVID money that we can only use for dairy products. We ordered from Hershey's and rather than going back and hitting that, oh, it's six, it's already negative. I wanted to not just charge milk, but charge the ice cream too. We kind of looked at what we thought we might spend for the year and put it out there, and it's just to use up that COVID money because they're very specific. They can only be spent for dairy products.
I understand.
But is that what we sell to the students?
Ice cream?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? Mrs. Bowers, do you call it, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Mr. Barry Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item is the athletic facility usage.
Looking for a motion for the approval of the facility usage as presented. Send it. Mr. Michael Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Messerschmidt, discussion. You guys understand that this has been changed in the past three hours.
Are the copies down there?
Sir, the copy's correct?
Yep.
Okay.
What was changed? Tier two sponsorship?
Okay, okay.
Is that still fair?
That was the only question I had about it, was whether it's different.
Where were the different?
Yeah.
Is this, is this pretty standard across the board compared to other districts? Michael, you was part of this committee, right?
Yes. And we got, we had the handouts last month. It is pretty even. We're probably middle of the road. Some things are less summer. I'll let you speak right on it.
Yeah, middle of the road on specific usage fees. What we did then is when we were comparing the other districts is most districts have some level of tiering or distinguishing between like schools, sports activities, community groups, and then outside groups. They have the call different, some had different pricing associated with it, things like that. We sort of took some of their frameworks and, and created what we thought would work for our district and our community, and that's how we came up with that tiered system. We were the only one that we worked at, I think, that didn't have some kind of a tiered system like that.
I guess the only question that I do have on this is like with tier two with like a select, and I'm thinking of like softball, for example, because I'm familiar with the situation with the select softball team in the, in the community. It, I don't see it specifically broke out. It's like you basketball, you competition cheer, you volleyball, wrestling. If we had an organization that we deemed tier two, these same rates would apply for the season. Is that correct?
Yes. So like tier two, that's the way we have it set up.
Does it depend on the number of days of the rental?
No, it depends on, so like tier two is made up of eighty students or more of it, which is easy. So as long as they fall in that category, they fall under tier two.
What, what's tier three?
Our rental. Oh, yeah, outside.
Okay.
Tier one with these schools doing it. So third, like, there is an organization that's not specifically listed on here, but they are deemed tier two. All those, everything would apply.
Yeah.
That's my question. Correct.
Good? Good. Mrs. Bowers, do you call it, please?
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Barry Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
That motion carries five zero. The next agenda item is the mobile comm quote.
Looking for a motion to approve the quote for the mobile comm on the water tower in Jaxburg that is being painted. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael, discussion?
Is this gonna better your wifi in your house?
I hope so.
It's actually for bus radios.
So what happened if we didn't move it?
Well, that, we would interrupt, interfere with our safety as far as how our bus drivers communicate to one another.
They wouldn't paint around it. I mean, they'd, they'd be painting over it if we didn't move it.
I don't think we have a choice.
I think they.
It's their property.
The choice, yeah.
Their property.
So how often does this thing get painted?
I did talk to Shane about this today. It has been there for thirty years without being moved. He also said that we are not the only ones that have an antenna on that tower. So there were a few people that had to have those moved, but it, it's been at least thirty years.
So this is a summer gap to deal with?
No.
Just take that right now.
Are we putting, moving it back to the same tower? Is that the plan?
It's actually in a different spot. He said he hated to call it a catwalk, but they were making a new place for it. But he said they wrapped it. If you looked at that quoting and all, they detailed it step by step, what they were doing, but wrapped it. But they needed to sandblast and paint, but they were wrapping and storing in one phase. They actually came back and broke this cop into two payments for us, so we're paying for it in phases. Then in November, they will replace it.
With that new antenna?
With the, with the antenna that we have. It's just not gonna be mounted until November.
I guess my question is, if it's thirty years old, should we think about just replacing the antenna?
It's mobile comms antenna.
It's not ours.
I think the water tower hasn't been painted in five years, I'm questioning that. We pay for the service.
An antenna.
They have an antenna there for that.
I assume that we don't need the antenna. Just think, if it's that old, maybe we should just move it. But I, I got you. That's fine.
I, I understand what you're saying. I don't, I don't believe it's ours. I, I believe it's something we probably pay for monthly. I think. We can find out.
Yeah, the only, I would say that we own the antenna. Let's just get a new antenna since we're taking the time to move it because I, to some person, like, a thirty-year-old antenna, a hour-old antenna is probably.
Sure, there'll charges for new, I mean.
And, and it's also, it's reasonable. I think it would make sense, right?
Again, find out. Find out what a new one would cost. Mrs. Bowers, do you call it, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Barry Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item is a quote for Warren County ESC.
Looking for a motion for the approval of the quote from Warren County ESC. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft. Discussion.
This is for any kid, I guess. Just been to the district, I'm like. Uh. Or could be a new identification.
Miss White, how long is this?
It was here last year, but new diagnosis.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
Excuse me. Mrs. Bowers, do you call it, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Mr. Barry Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. The next agenda item is various donations.
Looking for a motion to approve the various donations. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Ashcraft. Mrs. Bowers, would you call it, please?
Could I add first that there were two last-minute items that were brought to me that I added on the bottom there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very generous. Thank you. Mrs. Bowers, do you call it, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Mr. Barry Gabber.
Upstate.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Next, I would like to block items G and H for refund special cost centers.
I wanna, for motion to block G and H for new fund special cost center. So moved. Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler. Any discussion on these?
What's the first one? I didn't see anything attached to the first one.
Um, there was nothing attached to that, so the donations that you just approved, the majority of those will go into this. Mrs. Fossey had some help from Sharon Harvest with food for the kids over there. They're no longer able to help, so she has worked with her staff and they're putting in a food pantry there at the primary school. This is just where those funds will go, so.
Any more discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Bowers, do you call it, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Barry Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. That's all I have for this evening.
Okay, moving into superintendent items. Something ready?
We're ready.
All right. I would like propose we combine items six A and B as presented. A are field trips that are annual. These are not new. One's the softball games over spring break. The other is for the grade eight Washington DC trip. And the board meeting dates, this is the second due, and I believe one date was changed for October. Rather than that, they are the same as what you were given a couple months ago.
I believe it's the January that we moved. Maybe the October.
I thought October too. Okay. Oh, you're right. It was January. Sorry about that.
We'll look for a motion to approve A and B as presented. Send it. Mr. Michael Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft. These dates work for everybody?
My question will be July twenty-eighth date. I may be out of town, but we can, we can move that as it gets close.
As long as I'm the only one, it doesn't matter. Last year, remember, we had to move this.
Well, we can move it.
Well, I don't, I don't know for sure. I got reservations, but we're trying to move, so we'll see.
Play it out.
Reconsider. So keep it as is for now, Harman.
Keep it as is, and I'll let you guys know if it gets close. I'm trying to fix the plans around.
Any more discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Bowers, would you call it, please?
Mr. Michael Pressler.
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft.
Yes.
Mr. Barry Gabber.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler.
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt.
Yes.
His motion's carry five zero.
Okay, superintendent, superintendent items. I just have a few. Gary asked me what in the world they say to the schools' presentations are around town. I'm pleased to say that we are sharing our academic update, our financial update tomorrow at the library with the Trenton Business Luncheon. I will also be presenting, and certainly Patty's invited to attend as well, a seven-mile council meeting in November. We're working on the second or third week. And I'm also working with the city of Trenton for a date in February, and then we will be at the Community Foundation Church in April. The idea is just to tell our story about where we are with our strategic goals, our academic outcomes, as well as financial outcomes. We'd like to give a shout out to all of our staff in every building and with principals. I believe Alisa shared it was the first FAC meeting in history, would you say? Eric and Alisa, I don't know, but there was actually no concerns reported at that meeting. So it was short, and it was so short, I think we made people share what was going on well. So that's always good when people are working well together and being able to problem solve. So certainly a shout out for our staff. And then I'd like to shout out for Mr. Pressler over here. He did a great family night with Title I family. I believe Scott, you said over a hundred fans, a hundred students and parents, or a hundred and fifty?
Uh, in between a hundred and a hundred and fifty. I agree with what you're saying, but Title I teachers and the elementary principals.
Under your direction, so it was a great time with families to feed them, as well as share reading strategies at school, as well as what they can do at home. So we appreciate that extra time that went into that. And Alisa, a shout out as well. We can't shout out Scott without you. The good news bulletins are going very well that you put out every month. So it's just a time for people to love on one another and share acts of kindness that they see going on in the district. And then my last piece is on community engagement. The board gave me a task to meet with our community, which I meet with them monthly. With the exception of July and August, there are no, were no meetings. My task was to come back. If we had to eliminate a building, what would it be? And I'm here to tell you, I don't know what it would be. It's just not gonna be. As we look at our enrollment, look at our grade levels, look at the heritage, look at what our staff's doing. Really, I'm sharing with Mr. Gabber today, when we looked at open enrollment last year, in order to eliminate a building, we would have to eliminate all of our open enrollment. That would be about equivalent to a million dollars. And if that's the case, to close a building would be about savings a little less than that. It seems like a wash. To me, it's a new point. Our, our families like where they are. Matter of fact, there was conversation, would we ever entertain a community K-two, go back to neighborhood schools? There was quite a discussion last week that was, I don't say healthy, but I think it got kind of emotional at times as well in regard to, do we really have neighborhood schools? I think when we eliminated some years ago, they've never quite been neighborhood. But families like that concept to think that their children will attend with less time on a bus and their kids will attend a school that they pass on a daily basis. So we were gonna put out a staff survey, I think panic induced, and teachers started working with one another, which is fine. That's what happens in panic. Research says it's fight or flight. And they put out some informal information and what was reported with about ten staff members, twenty-four total community engagement members at the meeting, that a hundred percent of the K-two, pre-K-two buildings want to stay where they're at. And matter of fact, the challenge was, if we're doing so well with academics and we're doing so well with resource sharing and collaboration, we need to get that news out more. So they're gonna come back to our next meeting, November, in November, and share some of that data in specific examples of what that looks like. So that's where we're at. I'm here to tell you, board, I'm probably not gonna come back with the recommendation that you were expecting, but we always wanna do what's best for kids. And we certainly want to see better outcomes, and I can't wait to see the data that's presented next month as well. So that's where we are on community engagement.
Are we gonna go for a levy again?
We're gonna have a work session next week, I believe, next Tuesday or Wednesday. I need to look at my calendar, and Patty and I will be going over some financials with the board to set up that we do need to go for a renewal. We'll have an opportunity in May or in November. You'll hear from me, as well as Patty, that we encourage May, and that renewal means no new money to our constituents and taxpayers. It would be status quo. Also, Patty will present some data that we have a bond, one mill, not a lot, but every dime counts, one mill that falls off at the end of the year, so that actually would be a savings. So at community engagement a month ago, someone says, well, why don't you just tack that mill on to the renewal? That's illegal. One's a bond, one's operating, and our operating is what we're renewing. Or we'll propose to the board to renew, and that's what our work session would be about next week. Any questions? Mark, anything you would add to that? Double heated there for a minute or two, but we worked through it, so.
It's a, I don't think heated, it's very, very passionate.
Yeah, emotional. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowers. Next up, we have items from board minutes. Mr. Messerschmidt, would you like to start?
So for, as long as I've been around the, the community on this board, and I've talked about this up here many times before, one of the things that, in my opinion, makes this district very different than most is that a lot of our faculty, staff, administrators all grew up here, met their spouse here, live here, and are engaged here. And I got a, I got an email from Ms. Wiggins, who is actually my daughter's edg teacher at the middle school. And she took a group of kids from the middle school over to EIS a week or so ago to support the EIS Fall Fest. It was part of the community service Cougars in Action thing that, that they do. And it's an annual thing, and my daughter got to participate that, in that. And in this email, it talks about how the kids had an opportunity to mentor younger kids, how they got an opportunity to work to strengthen their community. And I think it really supports all the values that I think makes this district very special. And I know my daughter very much appreciated it. And I miss, I mentioned Ms. Wiggins by name, but there were a lot of other teachers that were involved in pulling this off, plus collaboration between building principals, administrators, and so forth. So I just wanted to recognize all the teachers and, and staff administrators that made that a reality. I think that's a really awesome thing. I know it was, it meant a lot to my daughter to be able to participate in that. So I thought that was pretty cool. And then the next thing I wanted to, to do is recognize my good buddy, Mr. John Arnold, and the success that they're having. And the, the band is actually gonna go to the OMEA State Marching Band Finals on November the third and get an opportunity to compete. I had an opportunity to spend some time with the band at the Ross football game. And I take the, the passion that those young men and women have about what they do, and I've got an opportunity to spend some time with Mr. Arnold and, and his whole team. And I just think it's a really awesome thing to see the success that they're having. I think that's a great thing for our school. You know, when we think about extracurriculars, band's not always one of the first things that come to mind, but these, these kids are working really hard and hoping that they'll have a great show when they go up on November the third to, to pick what they compete. I think that's all I got here.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Mr. Michael Pressler?
Uh, I have a good sir.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
I don't, I'll make it tonight.
Mr. Andrew Pressler. Well, I'm gonna give one shout out. I don't know if everybody knows, but we had a cyber attack at our school, and I think we did a very good job of keeping it. Shout out to you, Zach, that you're a crew. That's, uh, that's impressive.
He hasn't slept since, just so you know. He's questioned his profession. No, he's even questioned his profession, which I keep telling him he's a superhero.
Very good job taking care of that for us, protecting the school. Other than that, I think I'm just gonna ask for a motion.
Gary, can I just say one more thing? I'm sorry.
She's so sorry. All right.
It's, I think it's only fair to mention prayers for Mr. Johnson and his family, as well as the other families involved in the accident last week. And I just would like to say, continue prayers, and he's in our thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up.
Support.
Thank you. Totally forgot. I'm sorry. So. So definitely prayers out to the Johnson family and the other family involved for that. But now I'm going to look for a motion to move to executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official. So Mr. Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler? Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, it is six thirty-one minutes.
All right, we're back, it's eight twenty-four. Next up is personnel items. Looking for a motion to approve the personnel items as presented.
Send it.
Mr. Michael Pressler, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt? Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Next up, I'm going to look for a motion to approve the single supplemental nomination.
So moved.
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler? Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?
Mr. Mark Messerschmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Michael Pressler?
Yes.
Mr. Gary Gabber?
Upstate.
Mr. Andrew Pressler?
Yes.
Mrs. Amy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Next, I'm going to look for a motion to approve the job descriptions as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Marshall Messerschmidt, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michael Pressler? Mrs. Bowers, do you call a roll, please?